All right, at six o'clock, I call this meeting in order, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and eternal.
All right, first up is the approval of the agenda.
I'll move for the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Second. It's been moved to second, is there any comments, discussion? All those in favor of the agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Those who say no, agenda. Next up is the consent agenda.
I'll move our approval of the consent agenda for due point four, point five. Second.
Yes, been moved to second, is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions on the council table. Page three or four. Penjura, is that, Penjura, Penjura? Tables and chairs? Um, for North Mears.
Oh, Penjura. Yes.
I just. Sounds expensive, but I just wanted to verify that maybe they, I didn't get a chance to go down and look at them, and hopefully they have some kind of quality to them, that they're gonna last for a while.
Yeah.
They're the same as the, same as what we had on that matching.
Same.
It's the benches and same style looking and quality there.
I mean, I saw little plastic tables and chairs when, for the.
Oh, okay.
You know.
Feet in the street.
Yeah.
Those go into the chamber.
Well, I figured they belong to Hanson Hill.
They no longer chamber, they bring those around to the other vans.
I was hoping it was more than, more than those.
Okay.
And the other one was, what was it? Uh, US Postal Service on four of four. I just wanna verify that approximately how long might that white boxes of envelopes last? Is that like maybe a year's supply or six months?
Probably not, um, I don't know, Brooke or Brenna have a good idea.
It's a year's supply.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Anyone else?
I got a question on, also on the council table, on page one of four, we've got some flags, and I know a lot of, the forty of them must have been for grape marketing flags, correct? But the other ones which are big, are those given to veterans, or what are?
No, those are the, for the parks, different parks, just the flags that we have. We might even have some along Colby Street as well.
Oh, okay. Okay. Um, and then on page two of four, the new monitoring system. What is, did we have one that failed, or, or what is that for?
Um. Pardon?
No, good time, just really note himself.
Yeah, or is that?
Which, which one is it?
It's the second one down, on page two.
Yeah, that said EPS, Engineered Protection Systems.
Um, I don't know, I know EPS is primarily at the Playhouse. Uh, we also have a system at DPW. Pardon?
Do you want to say if they all have it or no?
No.
Uh-oh.
They're not alphabetized. I'll have to get back to you. Pardon me?
That I have.
Well, they're not anymore. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Comes up as a playhouse.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, then it's at the Playhouse, we've got security systems at Playhouse and DPW.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, sorry, I'm sorry.
Anyone else?
I have, I have just a comment on the council table, also on page two, the Jako Construction sidewalks, three hundred and eighty-seven feet, new sidewalk, kind of. South Livingston, I went by and looked at that sidewalks today. Did a really nice job, looks good, they're not done yet, they have some finish up work to do, but it's good to see new sidewalks, or sidewalk repairs going in. There are plenty of sidewalks yet that needs to be repaired in the city, and glad with.
That, that one was almost nonexistent.
Like stepping stones at best.
Glad to see that go forward.
All right, all those in favor of the consent agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Those who say no, consent agenda is approved. Next up, messages, so let's start with the council. Steve, here.
I just have one question. I've noticed an RV park on one of our roads, and parking alongside the road, and I've been there for probably six weeks, and I'm just wondering, is there ordinance about using city-owned parking areas for parking of RVs?
There is no prohibition against it, um, it's been brought up, the planning commission had developed a, an ordinance, uh, about seven years ago, regulating RVs, boats, campers, uh, and that was taken to council and failed to be approved by the city council, so we will bring that back up to planning, and you'll probably see something at your council desk in a month or two.
The parking that's being used is often used by people wanting to park and watch soccer games and football games and things like that, and pick probably the space of three, four cars that could park there. And it's been there a long time, and it just didn't seem right to me.
Yeah, nothing, nothing prohibiting it, and that means that camper is gone by fall, once all the activities start at the high school football field and football soccer field. They come in and they visit their parents who live directly across the street.
Oh. Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
I don't, if anyone would be in there, we don't have any way to do anything about it right now.
Okay.
I brought it up a couple of weeks ago.
I have nothing.
Okay. Uh, nothing, sir?
No?
Um. Scott sent, Scott Brown, sent an email around related to the water bill issue from Kathy Woods, and said that the, her plan didn't work because the meter isn't inside the house, so they can't measure anything, um, she can't, so any leak that happens is happening inside the house. Um, so I guess we're gonna wait till the next water bill to see how that comes in. Um, but anyway, I mentioned it the last meeting, uh, you know, it gets back to this thing, the, at the last meeting, you mentioned there was a statement at the May twenty-seven meeting, that the manufacturer had never had a meter fail, uh, which I said was ridiculous. Anyway, there was a statement here that we've never had a meter fail either, outside of a couple of instances where they ran backwards, which benefited, they, actually benefited the homeowner, well, I got called the next day by somebody who remembered an issue, and it wasn't even their meter, um, but this one goes back, uh, and I ended up getting the history of this from, from the resident, starting on the first quarter of twenty-twenty-two, their bills went from thirty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents to twenty-three dollars, to fifty-seven dollars, to thirty-four dollars, to forty-three dollars, to a hundred and thirty-nine, and then the next quarter was two hundred and sixty-one, at which point my understanding is they took the meter out, so, you know, we have had issues with the meters before, I figured that was worth mentioning, um, other people in the city actually remembered that, so, um. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, I would like to add to the next work session agenda, um, the issue of the city treasurer, um, and how that's been handled, and, uh, just look, I'd like to get council's impression on what's going on, I haven't been very happy with it, there's other people that haven't been very happy with it, um, I know that, uh, that's, handling the personnel issues is the discretion of the city manager, um, but it seems like we, like council could have been notified, uh, when the steaver was demoted, and, uh, it, in, in, it seems to me that council should have been notified when that position was advertised, um, for a new treasurer. Council has the, has to approve the hiring of a new treasurer, it just seems like we should have been notified of that, and, so I'd like to have that added to the agenda for the next work session.
That all?
Yep.
So we have the interviews for the next city manager coming up, and I know there is a meet session in the afternoon, five to six-thirty, I think, am I right?
Yes.
How, I'm just curious how that's being advertised, I've mentioned it to several people, they didn't know anything about it, so I just, I wanna make sure I, I mean, I've shared my Facebook stuff with folks, I just wanna make sure we're getting the word out, so people have opportunity to come and meet.
Uh, I placed, I put it on Facebook.
On Facebook, okay.
And, yeah.
Okay.
I, I think it's, I think Nate was supposed to send a press release to me, which I could send to the news outlets, I would team that in, but I could probably just send a flyer.
Is there a way we could send a blast out on our text system that we have for, for fine citizens of the issue, could we maybe do that, and I'm not sure how many people have signed up for it, but maybe some of them aren't on Facebook, and they might benefit from seeing it, so I just wanna spread the word as much as we can, so if you guys, if you guys haven't seen the notice, look on Facebook, and I think it's on, is it on our website too?
It, it will be.
Okay.
There's whole papers that might get that notification come out over the coming weekend when it's all done.
Well, right. I let MLive know today too, so hopefully they'll have something on that one.
I'm finished, thank you.
Oh, yeah, it would have needed to have gone up last week, done for a press release, but it has been on Facebook, and I've shared it, and maybe Scott, if you've got groups of people like planning, and TIPA board, and, you know, the various boards and commissions, if you could send them out an email, you know, that, that would be a great idea, I think, um, and I, and I'm gonna share it several times on Facebook and to folks. Um, wanted to mention that I was at the solid waste authority meeting last week, and for folks who don't know, it has a really fascinating history, it was started in nineteen-seventies, mainly for trash, and I still come across people who don't know, um, where it is or what it does, um, but we, we have two cities, so you have White House, you have Montague, four townships, and they're on a legal statutory authority to manage waste, and then in the nineteen-nineties, they started, um, doing recycling there as well, and I, I just think, um, based on the work that I've done on recycling, we're the only area in the county that has anything like that, that we're working together. There are a couple of townships that are just starting to think about working together, but we have six, and I, I just think that's really unique and really interesting, and, um, it, it, you know, it is a challenge because recycling costs money, and the prices go up and down depending on the market, but, um, we do have that facility out there, the solid waste authority meetings are open to the public, if anybody wants to know, I'm not quite sure, I mean, I'm, they're legal, they're publicly noticed, but if you want to come to them, you can let me know, and I'll, I'll put you on the list for that as well, uh, but I, I, uh, they have been saying that recycling is down, and the, the reason they think is because older people recycle and, and they are no longer living, so. That, that's, 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 well, and Tim Tibbetts, the manager out there, he and his wife, they're, they're great, if you see them out there, they're working hard, trying to keep the area clean, things like that, but they just said that there's people that they've known for years, that are avid recyclers, that, that are just not showing up anymore, so, didn't mean to put it in that odd place, sorry about that, but if, if you hear people asking about where can, you know, because people will say to me, well, I can't recycle, and I'm like, you sure can, if you're in the, the city, or the township, on Wednesdays and Saturdays.
Yes. Could I make another comment?
Yes.
I, I would like to, this is, I guess is the good time to put something on the next agenda for the preliminary meeting, we would call it the.
Work session.
Work session.
Work session.
Yeah, I'd like to put something on there about how we're gonna deal with this dear, uh, city property idea, because apparently it's, most people that voted very favorable, you know, time flies, pretty soon it'll be October one. Like a guy.
Yeah, I think we.
Little, I'll see, I'll put that on there. Thank you.
City manager, do you have anything for us?
Not this evening, sir.
Okay.
Myself, uh, we survived Electric Forest, um, I don't know, any, any of you had the opportunity to attend, I myself did on Sunday night, they do a spectacular job of putting on a very successful safe festival, I think a lot of people in this community definitely benefit from it, um, I've talked to restaurants and stores, and they've, they all had positive comments about it, I think it's a, it's a great thing for the community, I know they do a fantastic job of cleaning up the area afterwards, I talked to one of the people that connected to it, and they had given four truckloads of stuff that people had left behind to community food banks, and, and, so, there's a lot of that that comes to this community that a lot of people don't necessarily are aware of, so, give kudos to the great job that they do there.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, please. Ben, you brought, Ben, you brought that up.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I spent sixty hours working up at Electric Forest, um, did, the kids were great, the numbers were down a little bit this year, um, just coming back through town every night, uh, like the mayor said, there were an inordinate amount of upstate plates, um, just so everybody's made aware, um, I had an app that I went through just as I was working and pushing the plates, um, I had a total of fifty-two plates, the only states that I didn't find was Hawaii, which, that one's pretty easy to figure out, Idaho and Wyoming, um, as far as Canadian provinces, um, just to show you how well this travels, up borders Columbia, um, what's my add here, Ontario, uh, yeah, and I think that was it for the, for the, the Canadian, but that just shows you how well this is received, um, I probably saw more California plates than anything else, and just, and that's a trip, driving from California to Michigan and back, so, yeah, it was, it was, it was interesting to say the least, um, kids were respectful, didn't have any issues, uh, police, I don't think had a lot of issues, um, pretty, pretty easy group.
I'm su, I'm surprised the numbers are down, I thought, was that this year or next year that they were gonna increase the number of?
The, the.
This year they did.
This year they did, um, there was a lot more. This year they did. Um, there was a lot more, uh, day parking. That was full. Um, two-thirds full. Uh, they park in a place called Blueberry. Oh, my, Mary Bush is, that's why they call it that. But as far as campers go, I'd say they were down. A bit. There was two fields that weren't even used. And I, I'd heard rumblings from talking to some of the the kids, and I call them all kids because they're definitely younger than I am. Um, is that the lineup wasn't great this year as far as the, the people playing. I don't know them from Adam, but that's what they say, so. Um, like, like the mayor said, if you get a chance to go, get a day pass on Sunday. Um, my recommendation if you go is go at dusk or at night and at least walk the forest. The art is amazing, what those people do, um, in that short period of time is just, it, it's mind blowing to say the least. Even without the other stuff that they do, so. I guess that's it. Thank you.
They do a great job there. And one, one other thing that I wanted to bring up with some. Last, last time we met, the subject of pastors came up and there was discussion on that, so. And I went back and looked at the last accounts payable and I saw that there was three-hundred-and-twelve thousand in pastors to various organizations. A lot of that money that we take in and give back to these organizations. You can find it on the accounts payable of the last page of June ten. With that, we will move on to public comment. Anyone like to make a public comment?
Hello, my name is Kathy Russell.
Oh.
Wow. Um, I just wanted to thank Kenya for the information regarding recycling. Do they feel that potentially now that there is more recycling opportunities from a private contractor in the city of Whitehall, that there would be less coming into the solid waste authority facility?
Um, I don't think so. I mean, we, we've had haulers here for a long time.
Right.
And, and so. No, they, 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 the main thing that they said is their longtime customers are just not showing up.
Okay.
And, but I also think that people don't know a lot about the transfer station and maybe what's taken. And, you know, because I, I talk to people who live in Whitehall or Montague and they're like, well, we don't have recycling here. And, well, you, you have private haulers that you can contract with, uh, as well as, um, you know, you can take it out to the transfer station. I don't think it would hurt maybe to pop it in the next, pop it in the newsletter once in a while and remind people.
I know we did, we did take a large quantity of cardboard recently um, from a remodeling project that we had. And unfortunately, the day we showed up, the cardboard facility was not available because they had a breakdown on equipment. And so we had to wait a month to, for it to get corrected. But having that opportunity, I, I mean, it would have taken me to December to put it all in my private haulers in, so. But thank you. I'm glad it's available to us.
Well, and they take things like, you know, mattresses and different things. Um, you know, they've got the trash. They've got a metal bin. Metal used to help pay for the whole thing, but the metal prices go up and down. Um, and it's, um, like I said, I think they do a really good job. But we, we have had private haulers. We actually, City of Whitehall, at one point, I don't know if you remember Scott, had a, that'd have been before your time, there was a franchise operation for the city. Uh, that was part of our city taxes, but there was a time period where a lot of cities were just kind of removing that as a, as a service that they were providing and, and that happened. And I think it was around that time that we, um, we had, we got involved with the authority, but I think it's great. And, and I didn't realize until I did some work in this area that that we're the only area in the county that has this type of a setup. And I try to encourage it around, but people don't realize that it's, it's kind of a cool thing. And then when I was on before, we, uh, all of the townships have an allotment that they put in, but they put in for a, a revamping of the town.
Well, it is, it is a very clean facility.
Yeah.
You've not been there. Bring your junk. Bring your junk and check it out. But anyway, thank you very much. Well, thank you.
Anyone else? Kenya, since you, you are on this, um.
Sure.
Could you put together like a one-page of information that would be beneficial to the community to say, this is, this is what's available and this is how you do it, that we can put into the next? Maybe we could even post it on, on the, on the website. I think that would be good.
Yes.
Seymour Recycling.
Absolutely. And I will also, um, like I mentioned before, I was involved with a project where we have public education. And I'll try to pull that. It's just been, just a little tricky thing on our end to get that out and get that up on our website. But we actually have a, a digital map of the county with all of the different sites, including ours. You can click on it and then, um, just all of the information about how to recycle. I'll do that.
Yeah, so I need that kind of refrigerator and say, oh, yeah, okay, that's, that's. Thank you. All right, any further public comments? I don't believe we have any old business, so we'll move on to new business. Resolution twenty-five fifteen budget amendment number three.
I'll make a motion to approve budget, or resolution twenty-five fifteen budget amendment number three.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussions?
As usual, I just don't understand most of this. You know, when you're looking at this thing, it's, it, uh, a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars because of a grant that we didn't receive. Well, as far as I'm concerned, we shouldn't be counting on a grant until we have it. So we, we shouldn't be having to make a budget agreement, or budget amendment for it because we should have never taken it until we had it. Uh, you know, I just, I don't understand adjustments to Warner Street project to eight-hundred-and-two thousand dollars and Warner Street Water System for five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. I just. Is that saying that the Warner Street project was eight-hundred-and-two thousand dollars over budget?
No, a lot of these are, especially with construction projects, is because they span multiple years.
Uh, one, one other thing I got that, that, you know, a couple lines down, we're talking about the White Lake Association smart buoy and down near the bottom, we're talking about the Ring of Fund Contractual Service Mine for nine-hundred dollars. Those are, are those the same thing or not?
Yeah.
Okay, we're done. My, I don't have any problem with that part of it for this year. But what I would like to see that organization do for future years is to contact all the municipalities that front the lake instead of just the city of Whitehall and the city of Montague. I think Fruitland Township probably has as much waterfrontage maybe as City of Whitehall or more. And I don't.
Boyer Township is the same way.
Yeah. I mean, I, it's like I said, I, I, it's new and I want it to work. So I don't have any problem with it for this year, but I think it should be more equally divided from here on out. I don't know if somebody needs to contact them to ask them to, you know, try to equal all the funding for it in the future or not, but that's all I have.
Anyone else?
I compare with Scott on the funds for that, uh, that buoy and whether we divide it by mileage or whatever we need to do, it needs to be. Something needs to change.
Can I add on to that?
I, I think it'd be great if they could come and tell us like an annual, you know, what, what it's, um,
generating as far as information on the lake.
I was hoping there would be an app where we could actually physically go and look at it like a lot of the other buoys on the other side of the, like here.
I think there is going to be.
Yes, okay.
I thought that's what part of this form was, was to fund that app.
Yes.
Um, I, I'd like to, uh, ask a question on what Scott was talking about on the, the Warner Street project. Um, did, did we have a, uh, take the, um, adjustment for the street, they hit eight-hundred-and-two thousand dollars. Did we have a minus eight-hundred-and-two thousand dollars last year or or something to that effect? Or the water project being five-seventy-five, was there, did we spend less last year and more this year?
There, well, in, in a sense, yes, because the project was not completed by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four. Some of those costs carried over. Um, so last year's budget would have been less. Plus, we also, with council approval, expanded that project to pave all the way up to Colby Street. So that was, that was additional cost. So when you see a lot of these, uh, construction projects, it's just because they scant, scant, span multiple years. That's kind of the advantage of having a June thirtieth ending of a fiscal year because you can grab money from two years.
I remember that it did get early last year. It got stretched out longer. The planning period got stretched out longer, so I don't know if that was part of the reason.
Plus with the June storm from last year, we actually halted all the project um, because that was only, not only further, uh, north-south route.
So we're making a, a budget amendment of eight-hundred thousand, just about one example, say. Do we have the money?
Yes, yep.
So that's the part that's kind of hard to swallow. I, I'm not sure we had the money to spend it, so. So where, where is it coming? How, how is that working? I tried to go through the, the guys, you know, we have the, the line items and I have, you know, arrows and stuff all over the place. So I, I think I see most of it, but if you could just give a brief.
Most of it is going to show up in capital projects because when we do projects like that, um, water funds, sewer funds, major streets, um, the three mills actually goes from different funds into the capital improvement fund. So, yeah, all, all of this money is covered. All of the, um, additional costs. And some, like the hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars is revenue that wasn't realized. But as, as we're budgeting, we actually have to budget it in there, um, because we have to budget the grant amount plus the match amount. And then on the other side, we have to have the expenses matched that.
And if we don't get the, the matches there anyways. Correct.
Yes, yep. And, and council gave staff direction to use the match for bathrooms. We don't have nearly enough money to do that. So we'll probably come back to council here shortly, or we just carry it over into next fiscal year. Bathrooms, public restrooms are very expensive.
Oh, I've got a question on the exhibit eight page. Uh, where it shows in particular, we've, we had a hundred-and-eighty-seven, three-hundred was the initial budget for the year. Is that, am I reading that right?
Local streets is up there.
Local streets, yeah.
Yeah, originally it was one-eighty-seven in revenues and we took in, uh, actually three-ninety-one. But a lot of that was transfers to cover for storm damage on local streets.
Okay, so the five-thirty-four, that, a lot of that was the local, was the storm damage.
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, roll call please.
Holstrom?
Yes.
Sitinda?
Yes.
Kabala?
Yes.
Philogram?
Yes.
Zimer?
Yes.
Brown?
Just don't make it unanimous, yes.
Salter?
Thank you, yes. And once again, thank you to our city manager for the excellent job of managing the city's funds. All right. Next up is resolution twenty-five seventeen charitable gaming license for Friends of the Playhouse.
I'll move resolution twenty-five seventeen, uh, a charitable gaming license for the Friends of the Playhouse.
A second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
What do they want to do with it?
I want to, yeah. I want to know where the funds are going, if they're going to raise. Is it going to the operation of the playhouse? Is it going to the endowment fund? What's it, what's it going for?
Um, it's not going into the endowment. It's probably for, uh, general operations. This is a requirement from the state of Michigan that you're actually just recognizing the Friends of the Playhouse as a local charitable organization. So they'll use this license to do a number of fundraising activities. And go towards various expenses.
You have to have one to do a raffle.
Right.
Correct, yep.
You have to have one, just for a raffle?
Absolutely. A lot of people don't, but they, they, yep. You had to do it for the duck race for the, uh, for the White Lake Fire Authority Association used to do it now.
Marked them all over, overregulation. Okay, so basically, we're just approving Friends of the Playhouse Foundation as a charitable organization.
Well, they, they already are. You're just recognizing them as a local one in order to get them a license. You're just saying, yep, they exist.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further discussion on this? Roll call please.
Holstrom?
Yes.
Philogram?
Yes.
Kabala?
Yes.
Sitinda?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Zimer? Salter?
Yes. Resolution twenty-five seventeen is approved. Next up is Walk the Beat banner request.
I was wrong that we approved the request to place banners in front of City Hall on or after July seventh, announcing their festival and acknowledging their sponsors.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yeah, it says, let me know for the process for setting this up. What, what are they, are they asking for City Hall to set new banners up? Is that what they're doing or?
Uh, for locating the stakes because we have, uh, underground watering systems. We don't want people just to put them in.
Comment.
So TPW will say this is a good spot. We typically hauled them in and then they'll stream the banner.
All right, great, thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed say no. They're approved. Last up is public comment. Anyone have a public comment?
I am not sure where everybody is on this process. But in looking at the new restroom that went into the pocket park between Catchmark and Bells, I'm sorry, but it is super ugly. I, it's, it's kind of a laughing matter, but it really does not reflect our community. And when are you going to finish? I've obviously waited till construction was done to finish the walkway through there. But the pocket park is now diminished. And why weren't we using the existing restrooms? And why did we have to build a separate building that has one stall? I mean, there's usually more than one person needing a restroom. I, I'm very disappointed in how it looks from the street, both from Colby Side as well as from the parking area behind Catchmark and in front of Hanson Hill. It, it's really, it's really ugly. It's a little too late. But I don't know what the process was to get that built in, in the construction site and style that it is, but I think it's kind of a travesty. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully you learned to love that ugly duckling. Any further public comment?
I, I couldn't concur that, uh, I've, I've heard quite a bit of disappointment about the bathroom from the public. And I haven't heard anybody that said they really liked the way it looked, so.
Is it ticks to the ground? Is it?
Yes.
Pick it up?
No.
Come on, I'm pretty sure we could do that. We could, we could move houses, we could move a restroom.
All right. Here's there's some for your comment. Thank you all for.